Trying to get on at this time, so be joining us here in just a minute. But we can get started with our basic formalities to start off with while we're awaiting. I believe that I see all the rest of our board members onboard here online. We've got Director Pickens, Stauffer, and Jeffries, and as I said, Director Koo is should be with us here in just a minute or two. He's just messaged with him and he's getting online here shortly. So since we've, as I said, we can go ahead and get started with our general protocol for the day. So I'm going to call the meeting to order. And as I call the meeting order, first up, we will start off with our Pledge of Allegiance. So if you could all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting. All right, ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you. So again, as we are still in a virtual mode here, just some of the protocols that we'll be following. If you are joining our meeting, please make sure that your microphones and video are turned off. So you're muted and your video is off. This way, we don't have any disruptions and it helps with maintaining the integrity of our, the internet of the meeting. Just to note, if you look at the top, the meeting is being recorded. So please note that. And then all public statements at this time will still be taken in written form. And you can send them into Tracy@tnorman@squimschools.org by 5:30 for the meetings. And we will take those and read those. So I'll be reading the public comments that we've received since our last meeting upcoming, when it gets to that point during the agenda. With that said, next up, if we could, if I could get, see Director Pickens, could you read our vision and mission statement for us?
Sure, be happy to. Our vision is our community inspires and prepares each student to thrive. And our mission, in connection with our community, the Squim School District empowers staff to inspire hope and provide flexible, innovative learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment. So each student thrives.
Great, thank you so much. So before we move on to our special presentation, which I'm excited to hear because I've been awaiting this result. The first thing I'd like to do is I'm, we're going to slightly change the agenda. And just I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Clark. We just had a quick conversation and I'm sure that there, we have a lot of people that are on the call right now. And one of the questions, of course, is what are we doing? We are going to be discussing more in depth of our school plan upcoming. But there, you know, as we all see in the news, there's been some changes recently in our area. So I'm going to allow Dr. Clark this time to kind of jump in and have an announcement for us.
Thank you, Director Gibson. As Director Gibson indicated, we've all been reading the paper or following the news. And Clallam County has had some spikes in their coronavirus cases over the last three to seven days. And because of that, the Clallam County Superintendents had a meeting with Dr. Unthank this afternoon. And as of this afternoon, our cases were at approximately 81 per 100,000. And if you recall from previous conversations, if we were to go above 75 cases per 100,000, that that would severe, that would severely restrict in-person attendance. And we have made the decision this afternoon to all of the school districts in Clallam County that we will be going all remote, 100% virtual. And I want to be a little bit careful about that 100% number. It's going to be awful close to that, but there may be a very limited number of students who because, and when I say limited number, I'm talking about less than 10 because of their needs and the equipment this school has, the school district has. We may be serving their needs periodically. But by and large, K-12, we're going to be at 100%, somewhere 99.5% remote. We also made the decision in conjunction with Dr. Unthank that we are going to stay remote until we have four weeks straight of under 75 cases per 100,000. That is not just us, that is all of the school districts in Clallam County, all of the public school districts in Clallam County. So that decision was made this afternoon, not a decision we take lightly. Personally, I, it was heartbreaking for the four of us. We wanted to see kids in our schools. And we, but we also have an obligation to follow the Department of Health guidelines. And I want to be clear about that, that school districts who do not follow the Department of Health guidelines put their school district in a extremely light place of great liability because our insurance company has said, if you do not follow the Department of Health guidelines, you will not be covered for a COVID case. And I know our school board, I know myself, we take student and staff safety at the highest end. And we're not going to put any of those individuals in danger. So that decision was made. There will be a press release coming from Clallam County Department of Health tomorrow afternoon at some time. And so we are going to dedicate our time and resources to doing the best job we can remotely. I hope in some ways, I try and be a glass half-full type of person, that this may be in effect a blessing in disguise in the sense that I was very concerned, not only myself, but as was the school board and other community members of what was going to happen after Labor Day. And so that's where we're at right now. We're going to be talking about that a little more when we go through the plan. But I wanted to, I asked Director Gibson if I could make this announcement before that. And I also want to say that school still starts on 9/2. This does not change the start date of school. You will be, your children, the parents will be hearing from buildings and everything. School still starts on the 2nd of September. That does not change. So I know this may bring more questions, but that's where we stand right now. And I would ask that we move on to the rest of the meeting. If the board has questions in the presentation of the plan, then I'll try and answer them at that time. Thank you, Director Gibson.
Great, thank you. And yes, I'm sure we do have a lot of questions from both parents and staff on the implications and what this means. And we'll discuss that at some time. Yeah, we'll have some questions, I'm sure, from the board later as we go through the presentation. Appreciate that. And thanks for, you know, it is a tough decision. I know we'd like to be in school, but you know, following protocol and looking out for the safety of everybody is the number one priority. Okay, moving on, I'm going to turn this over to Director Pickens, Director Jeffries. So we had a opening on our student, as a student board representative. And they both participated in the interview process. And again, I want to thank them for taking that task on. That's always hard because we always have some great candidates. And I've been anxiously awaiting the announcement of who has been chosen. And I think we're going to hear that right now. So I'm going to turn it over to whoever's taken that ball.
The student representative for the school board, they have two students.
Director Pickens?
All right. Yeah, I was, I was, I was very happy to go through the process. We had, we had four candidates that were very strong candidates. And I was, yeah, it was, it was a great process to go through. And I'm glad that there were so many folks stepping up, wanting to step up into the role. Director Jeffries, do you want to add your thoughts?
No, I agree. It was actually a very pleasurable process to talk to the students. We had all 15-minute, half-hour roughly virtual interviews, which was kind of unusual. The students, the students did very well and I was very pleased. Director Pickens, myself, and Olivia Crest, the other, the current senior school board, student school board rep and Dr. Clark were on the calls. And like I said, it was a very pleasurable process. Go ahead, Eric.
And I was going to go and actually pass it on to Dr. Clark. If you want to go ahead and make the announcement, I'll let you have that honor, sir.
Thank you, Director Pickens. And I just echo what both Director Jeffries and Director Pickens had to say. It was, it was great to see the strength of our student body. And our new, the junior representative for the school year 2021 is Alyssa B. Bai.
Yes.
I got it right, Alyssa?
Yeah, that's right.
Because Tracy had it phonetically, phonetically pronounced for me. So I wanted to make sure I got it right. Congratulations, Alyssa. Look forward to working with you. If you want to say just a couple of brief comments, we'd be, we'd love to hear it.
Thank you, first of all, for giving me the opportunity to represent my class this year, the junior class. I'm really excited for this position and I am looking forward to working with you too. So let's have a great year this year.
Thank you.
Oh, great. Well, that's a welcome, Alyssa, to our, to our team. Look forward to at some point, meeting you and at some point, we'll, we'll have an opportunity to hopefully at least be socially distanced in a room and have a meeting here in the near future at some point. But I know there was some amazing candidates out there as well. You must have really shined and thanking, thanks again to Director Pickens, Jeffries for that. And again, really looking forward to having you on our team, you and Olivia, I'm sure. So welcome, welcome aboard. Okay. All right, next up, we have some business to take care of. So first up, we have the approval of our, of our minutes for our regular meeting and our workshop. So looking for a motion for approval for the minutes?
Director Stauffer.
The minutes as presented.
Okay, so we've got a, it sounds like Director Koo might be on the phone there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. So we do have you, I was trying to hunt you down. I see you're on with us now with the phone. Good, so we've got a, we've got a motion and a second between Director Koo and Director Stauffer. Any discussion on those?
I just noticed on the, the details for the August 10th workshop meeting, that was, I believe that was the workshop that, that I opened up because Director Gibson was not there. So I noticed that it did show that Director Gibson called, was calling, called the meeting to order. So I wonder if we can make that correction.
That we could do. All right, any other changes or any thoughts on those? Okay, noting the one change to the August 10th workshop. All those in favor of approval of the minutes signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same sign? All right, motion carries. Next up, any changes to our agenda? Other than our initial announcement?
There are none.
All right, noting no changes to our agenda.
Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the agenda as previously amended.
My second.
Okay, any discussion? All right, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same sign? All right, next up, we have our consent agenda. Motion to move.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Right, we've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on the, on these items?
Yeah, Director Gibson, this is Director Jeffries. Just one question on the surplus. There are several pages there about computer devices. Can I get a little bit more clarification, what those are, where they came from, what's happening?
I'll do the best I can. I might ask Assistant Superintendent Maun to chime in here in a minute. But the overwhelming majority of those devices were donated or purchased at a very small price, about nine, nine or 10 years ago, from the Issaquah or Redmond School District. They were purchased, used, and they just essentially ran their lifespan. And this is the first surplus of computer products we've had in several years. And they were gathering dust in the, in the tech department and some other things. But if I didn't answer that question, I would ask Assistant Superintendent Maun to chime in.
Dr. Clark, this is Jennifer, and I can, most of that is pretty accurate. Director Jeffries, they are, most of the devices are five to 10 years old. They are three generations old, so we are on newer generations. So our new teacher laptops and the devices that we're currently buying are four generations ahead of the old ones. They were purchased from Issaquah back in the day. They were Issaquah surplus and we purchased them from Issaquah for $25 each. And this is the first time that we have surplused this kind of technology, at least in my recent memory. So that's the information that I have.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
I thought I saw Director Koo.
Just one, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just recognizing a little bit out of our swim lane as a school board, is there an opportunity potentially for these antiquated devices to be donated to like the PC users group to potentially be fixed up and deployed as needed to families in need?
Dr. Clark, I can answer that if you'd like.
I was hoping you would, thank you.
Director Koo, we've, we've, in the surplus list, there are some that the PC user group is going to help us refurbish and get out more quickly to our students and families in need through the school district. And then we have four pallets going directly to the, to the PC users group and another, another entity. So they will all be going to places where, in which they can be refurbished and returned as needed.
That's great, thank you. And whichever one of yours or both staff had the unfortunate duty to catalog these for our action tonight, please extend our gratitude.
Great, thank you.
And thank you for that explanation.
All right, anything else, anything further? Okay, hearing nothing further, all those in favor of the consent agenda signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed, same sign? Okay, let me switch screens here. All right, hang on one second. Yeah. Working towards getting to, I'm trying to get to the agenda so I can read the public statements here. Hang on. All right, your technology challenge, this is what I get for having too many screens open at the one time. Bear with me for one second. There we are, almost there. Okay, here we are. All right, so we did have two, two public comments that were sent in. First is from Angela Eldredge from the Transportation Department. And the question was, is the district thinking about going to a two-bell system for social distancing? We'll be discussing kind of more our plan in the future, but as we see now, we, there is, we're going remote. Secondly, from Jenna Williams, a community member, dear Squim School Board and the citizens of Squim, I'm writing to you to have you stand up and start asking questions about the education being offered to the students of Squim. Currently, we are hemorrhaging students to other online programs or homeschooling by very frustrated parents. While the debate has been raging about having school or not having school, having a hybrid model or not having a hybrid model, no one has stopped to say, how is school going to be ready for our children? How are we going to teach kids at home with students not just lacking computers, but also lacking Wi-Fi access and/or both? No one has asked how the teachers will be ready to teach when they are lacking in the technological training or in safety precautions set up at school for them to return safely to work. Currently, we have principals running around buildings without masks and secretaries being public, seeing the public without plexiglass shields set up for their protection. While I understand we have a levy to pass in the spring, our levy would pass easily if assurance were coming from our superintendent that we will not have a repeat of last spring. And most of all, the knowledge that the teachers have been getting ready for your student to learning, start learning in the fall in whatever model is chosen for them. It would also pass if everyone felt that the school would be ready. I'm calling for the Squim School Board to grow a spine. You need to start asking your superintendent that you hired to lead the district about community action. The district should have set up committees made up of teachers, community members, and city leaders months ago to help with tech education for teachers, tech for students, and most of all, resolution to the Wi-Fi issues, all of them through the frustration of Common Core, Canvas, and Microsoft Teams. If anyone felt that we would be going back to school in the fall as before we bet wrong and it's time to jump into action. Squim School Board members, we are less than a month away from school starting and little less has been done to help the parents of Squim to feel comfortable with the education their children are receiving. There is no shame in asking for help or saying you made a mistake. This actually would get you more support. Ask the community for help. Squim is full of professional people for all walks of life that want to help the school, but often feel like there is wall between the school and the community. If there was ever a time to break down a wall, this would be the time. We must call our town to action. We must address the mistakes and we must move forward to building the confidence of our schools. So please consider my words. You are men that, you all are men that came together to make the schools better. Do your part. There's nothing wrong with questioning the superintendent. There's nothing wrong with admitting that you need help. We're a beautiful community of helpers. Help is available. All you need to do is ask. That ends our, our comments for this evening. Okay. Moving on, next up. We have no, we don't, we met our new student representative tonight and we'll be resuming with them next month. So next up, we have our board communication. So with that said, I will start off with Director Koo.
All right, just a quick sound check. I'm battling technology myself, can you hear me?
We got you.
All right, thank you, sir. Just a couple of quick comments. First of all, Alyssa, look forward to meeting you and working with you. Super excited. I want to thank Directors Jeffries and Pickens for the unfortunate task, although I hope you found it enjoyable too, just seeing some of our dynamic students. And we certainly do have them. And I know this was not an easy decision for you. So thank you for your work for that. I appreciate the ongoing outreach that the district has been doing. Yeah, I'm not going to respond to public comments directly, but as always, there may be an opportunity for community-focused outreach, even though I would say that there has been some and I actually think it's been done very well in terms of the videos on social media and whatnot. But just recognize there's always room to improve. But finally, just with Dr. Clark, thank you for your leadership, just-in-time leadership. You know, as most recent this afternoon and having to make the right decision, but an unfortunate one nonetheless. Fully support you in that decision for the safety of our students and our teachers. And I'm looking forward to being able to inch towards normalcy as soon as we can and once the storms have settled a bit. So thank you once again showcasing your experience and leadership during these trying times. And that's all I have.
Okay, great, thank you, Director Koo. Director Jeffries?
Yeah, I would just like to emphasize what a pleasure it was to interview the students that were applying for student rep. I think the leadership, student leadership at Squim Schools is in good hands. And I look forward to working with Alyssa and Olivia. I thought it was a really good process. Both students, they, one of the questions we ask all of the reps is what kind of projects they would be interested in. Last year, Olivia and Peyton talked about coming up with some kind of project to do as school board reps for their student body. And I look forward to seeing what, what they come up with and supporting them in as many ways as I can. Also, I've been attending lots and lots of webinars with other board directors from around the state and listening to what they have to say and what, what they're doing. And I'll tell you that for the large part, there are problems or their problems, and their problems are our problems. We're all talking about the same thing. We have the same concerns. And if you look, there's a lot of uniformity around this on how we're addressing this COVID crisis and getting our kids back to school. The same concerns for remote learning and the lack of class time for kids is out there. So we're all in this together and this is a brand-new world. And we're all, in a lot of ways, we're all first-year teachers, first-year board mates in this brand-new situation. So it, we need to be in it together. Thank you.
Absolutely. Great, great comments there, Director Jeffries. Next up, Director Stoffer.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. First, I also like to welcome Alyssa to our team. And just to state how important that student voice is to the conversation, how much that's recognized at the state level during the legislative work. And so, and thank you to Director Pickens and Director Jeffries for your work with going through that process of selecting a student board rep and looking forward to continuing that work with student voice. And the other thing I have is how much safety is paramount to what we're all facing right now. And I appreciate the dialogue that our superintendent is having with the other four superintendents of Clallam County with Dr. Unthink. Because we, as Director Jeffrey said, we are all in this together. And and we're trying to write the music format or the, and direct the orchestra right now. And it is extremely complex and it's important that we all are on working out the same piece of music. So I also appreciate the messaging that is starting to roll out from our buildings. And that's very helpful in that community outreach to the, not only to our parents, but to the community. So thank you, building principals for starting that. And otherwise, that's all I have for now. I know I have a presentation coming up, but thank you.
Thank you, Director Stoffer. Director Pickens.
Thank you. Yeah, I've just been spending a lot of time researching and well, a lot of professional development myself as I, as I, as I jump into the remote learning as well, but just researching what best practices are so that we can serve students of students of Squim the best we can, and particularly with this news of all remote. That's, I think we're going to have to continue that some of the work that's already been done, but just make, continue to make, make it a priority. It's a steep hill to climb when we talk about remote learning. But there are just a lot of research around what constitutes instructional hours and what doesn't. And thinking about some of the more social aspects that a lot of our students are going to miss out on and how those can potentially be substituted in a, in a remote environment. Because I think that plays a big role in the, the mental health of our, of our students. And that is something that I'm very concerned as we, as we go down this path of remote learning. That being said, I think we have to, you know, of course, play safety first, but but I think we can do the best we can with social emotional learning and other, other aspects that might otherwise be left out in a, in a virtual environment. So and, and yeah, great to, great to have a new student board member, as I've said earlier. So if she's still on, just welcome to the team and that's all for me. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yeah, just ditto on a lot of the comments from earlier as well. I will, I will say, you know, I know that there's been a lot of work and effort going on over the last several months, but even back when we were still in our virtual mode from, from the end of the last year and moving forward into the current year between staff and, and leadership. And we've had a lot of community, as Dr. Clark mentioned earlier. You know, the decision for going full remote was not just a Squim decision, but this was a county decision. So all, so we've had collaboration going between, and I appreciate the collaboration that we've had going on between all the superintendents within the entire county and some of the outlying counties. I know we've communicated within our entire ESD on how things are being handled. This is a, this is a different time any enough as, as any of us have seen. I know in my day job, you know, running WorkSource Office and looking at virtual programs that we're offering going on, oftentimes there's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes that's happening that we're just not aware of that's happening. And yes, as we talked about in our workshop last week, there's, there's one area that we, we always can do well, but we can always do better at, and that's communication. And, you know, I think some of the recent things I appreciate the district and some of the YouTube videos. And we have the upcoming town hall that we'll be discussing later as well for parents and all to join in on and just learning more about and being able to ask some, some additional questions. So I would just encourage also anybody that's participating or listening in as well, if you have questions, you know, send them in. It's, we can definitely, you know, more questions that come in, those can help with maybe direction that we're going. And I know Dr. Clark and his team are doing all that they can to make sure that we open in the best capacity that we can moving forward. And, you know, appreciate all the thoughts and input from, from the community. And again, the support, supporting our superintendent and our district with, with everything we can is, is what we should do as a community. And that's all I have for now. All right. Next up. Next up, we have a finance and enrollment. And Dr. Clark, looks like you're going to take that on for us.
I was muted there. Yeah, I told Darlene I would do this report. It's been a tough, tough summer on Darlene. Her mother passed away and so she lost a lot of time, but she did great work getting the budget up and ready to go. And she's in Montana, I believe, with friends and family. So much needed, well deserved vacation for her. The, the budget or the 1920 budget is looking a little bit better in regards to the cash reserve. The, we're probably going to have a little bit higher cash reserve than we thought we were going to have. And the majority of that stems from the fact that we had less expenditures than we anticipated or than we budgeted for. And a lot of that had to do with COVID and being shut down. Most of, some of those expenditures very well may be made up in the next few months because we delayed some of the purchases, but some of those things will have to be caught up. But as you can see, our cash reserve at the end of this month is about 3.2 million. I misplaced my glasses to read some of those things. So I spoke with Darlene at length about this and she was pleased as well. We're, you know, on a projection, I, I, I don't think our cash reserve is going to end up quite at 3.2, but it's going to end up somewhere between 2.6 and 3. And we budgeted for 2.2, so that's going to be nice. That will help us out as we move forward into this year, because this year is going to be a strange year. Because we don't know what our enrollment is going to be and how that's going to look and where we're, where we're all going to be. So one thing that was extremely pleasing and you can see that in not only did we get all of our taxes for our EPNO levy, we actually got 107%. And I'd like to take credit for that as a first year superintendent getting 107% of taxes. But what that really says to me is we sold some tax, some houses were sold that had been, that hadn't paid their taxes for a while. So what, when you buy one of those houses, you have to pay the back taxes. So that's what happened with, when you see that we had 107, 108% of our taxes paid. That, that's always nice because I will tell you in, in April, May, I was concerned that we wouldn't even hit our budgeted. We usually budget at 97% of anticipated revenue. So we ended up getting 100, almost 107. But I will, like I say, I want to qualify a little bit of this because I think we put off some expenditures that may need to be made after the, after we get back to school. I think our upcoming budget is looking good. Our capital projects levy will make the final payment in towards the end of December and we will be pretty much done with that fund with the exception of a few dollars that straggle in over the next few years. The budgets look good. They look good. I mean, and it's a good time to have them look good because again, without beating a horse to death, it's going to be a tough year. So I would be ready for questions if the board has any.
Okay, yep, there we go. At the, I was just going to say, if we could raise hands for questions, that would be great. Director Jeffries. You're first up.
Yeah, I think it's, go back to that emergency fund. It looks like it right now, maybe at about four and a half percent. Personally, I would like to see it higher than that, but I would encourage the district to, that we hold on to those funds as long as we can in this time of uncertainty. I don't want to spend those funds too soon before we, before uncertainties turn into certainties, then we can look at, see how that fund could get us out of a corner if we find ourselves there. So I encourage you to hold on to that money as long as you can and not spend it too early. But other than that, the budget looks great. And thanks to Darlene, and she does amazing work.
She does, and I concur with your assessment.
Any, anybody else?
I probably, the one other thing that I really didn't mention and why it was the other, we had less expenditures, but we also had less salaries too, because for April, May and June, there were no substitutes. We didn't have a lot of trips. So we saved some money in various accounts. But we do have to be careful to hold on to it and as, and I won't restate what Director Jeffrey said, just that I concur with his assessment.
Nope, Director Pickens.
Do you know offhand, Dr. Clark, what, what our ending fund balance was at the end of last year compared to, compared to this year?
Okay, now to be clear, we don't know what our ending fund balance will be.
Sure.
We, we usually know that at the end of September, towards the end of September, because we are in a, you know, we are in accrual district and that means that if there's an expense, if we get a bill September 5th for a service that was provided in the 1920 year, we pay that and it gets, it gets credited back to the 1920 year. But I believe I believe our ending reserve was somewhere around 2.3 or 2.4 million dollars last year. And I'll check that. And if that's wrong, I will get back to you. But that's what I'm remembering.
All right, thank you.
Nope, and now I'm muted. Anybody else? Okay, well, great. Thanks for filling in there, Dr. Clark. Tough shoes to fill there, but appreciate the update on the budget. Okay. Moving forward. Next up, we have a presentation from our Director Stoffer on WASDA General Assembly coming up. So Jim, I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you. And I won't take a lot of time. Normally, we have a workshop on this. So with all the virtual meetings and access that's out there, it's, a lot of the information is readily available. So Tracy, can you bring up the presentation, please? So in front of us, you have the General Assembly Handbook. And there's some nice bullet points that cover the purpose of what we're doing here. At one time, actually prior to this year, we had two assemblies. One was called the Legislative Assembly and the other one's called the Delegate Assembly, which was held during annual conference. And so this year, first time, it's all combined and it will all be virtual also. And this event is where all 1,477 board directors throughout 295 school districts can sit down, kibitz and look over our values and then set a course for the upcoming legislative sessions. What's been happening before that? And Tracy, could you click on that position, that highlighted area? So this just gives you some of the pre-work and all this is found under the Strategic Abixy tab up there at the top of WASDA's page. And which is where the Legislative Committee, that's where we call our home. But back in March, proposals were submitted. And if you want to, anybody who's interested in doing that in the future, that's, it's all found on this page. So going back and Tracy, if you could go back, please. And then go to the next slide. And then if you can click on that first General Assembly overview, please. So here is what's on the menu. It's on September 25th. There's a timeline for us all. We kicked off the caucus meetings this past week. And we're under Director Area Four, which is the Clallam-Jefferson Kids App. And then North Mason School District, so 15 of us. And then what opens on Thursday or Friday is draft amendment process. And I just encourage my fellow, my colleagues, they can check that out on how to submit an amendment to a position. And that window is open until the 28th. And you can do that as amadual. It doesn't require board action on that. After that, Director Gibson, you will be receiving an email from WASDA asking who do you want to designate as the voting delegate? And I respectfully ask that I retain those credentials as the legislative rep, in which I've performed those duties for the, the last four years. Then moving forward, September 18th, that's when all of us will see the final amendments. amendments. And because this is done virtual, um, there's been a, a pretty big learning curve, um, for everybody. And it will be on a platform called Lumai. And, and actually all the board members will be able to attend. Um, and I'm going to go to the next page here. Tracy, if you could back out of that. And then I'm going to have you go to, uh, section one of that second slide. Yes. And on there, you know, you'll see a little more of the amendment process and the rules of procedure for the General Assembly. How voting will occur. And then Tracy, if you could. Where did it go? I was looking for the table contents. Oh, here we, there, you're good right there. So, uh, there's the whole agenda starting at, um, 8:00 AM on the 25th and where we'll first, um, Board President Brenda Rogers of WASDA Board will present. And then after some, uh, bylaws work, it will be turned over. Uh, Tracy, go ahead and hit that section one again. Sorry. And thank you for this help. And scroll all the way up on that one. There we go. So there, that's the, uh, agenda for the meeting and, uh, just encourage my colleagues to look through that. Um, it's a long day, um, going from eight in the morning to eight PM. Like I said, all the, um, fellow board members can be there. Um, and, um, the voting condent, uh, credentials can be passed, um, to another one, uh, through a process in which I will, can cover in great detail at another time. But I'm hoping, uh, the board members will join me for, uh, this very important work. And Tracy, if you can back out of there. And next section is session two, Proposals and Positions. And here you will find, uh, the permanent positions which follow, fall under the res- Resolution Committee and then the legislative positions would fall under the Legislative Committee's work. Um, Resolutions, the permanent positions are those longstanding enduring which such, um, are the basic foundation of WASDA. And, uh, if you scroll through there, you will see, uh, and there's five buckets, categories also. And these permanent buckets will also align with the legislative buckets, which we'll see soon. So, um, when we go up to a next slide, it, uh, breaks down a little more of, uh, how many we're expecting to see. And this is on pages eight through 10 of your handbook and just encourage my colleagues to look through those as we, uh, go into the next steps. So Tracy, if you can back out of that one. And then let's go to that third slide, Membership Meetings. Scroll on down a little bit more. Okay. What's, uh, what's occurring, especially right now is that what I call the membership meetings. And those are the Equity and Access, um, in which all are welcome to join that. And, uh, you register on that link up there on your right. And that meeting is on Thursday at, um, 5:30, 7:30 to 7:00. Federal Relations, which deals with the federal legislation part of our work. And that's on Wednesday. Large Schools and those are, um, the, uh, ones like, uh, Bremerton, Central Kitsap, Seattle, so forth. But you're welcome to join, join that. Um, Director Jeffrey has actually joined the Small Schools one today. And we're, we're just shy of being, uh, north of a small school and they don't have a middle school caucus. So, um, I appreciate, uh, Director Jeffrey's attending that one and, um, developing, uh, some networking there. And then on Thursday is the Trustland Caucus and everybody is, uh, um, free to join that too. And you do that all by the link up there. On next slide, please, Tracy. Okay. This shows the relationship between the permanent, permanent positions, which come out of the Resolution Committee and the Legislative Committee. And, um, those are the, the five buckets on either side. Um, Permanent Calls, their governance, uh, association operations. Um, and the number in parentheses is the proposals that we will be looking at, at the assembly. So there's two under operations, one for learning, um, zero for staff, capital facilities, four, funding, eight. And then on the legislative side, there's, you can see the numbers there. So we go down to the next slide. And here is just a sample of some of those, uh, uh, positions, which you will find in your handbook. And, uh, if it doesn't, uh, have a number like that second one, um, that means it's a brand new one. And until we vote on it, it, uh, won't be assigned a number. Uh, but, uh, there's the equity statements. Um, then, uh, long range facilities planning, funding of co-curricular activities, which, um, that had heavy legislation last year with a bill. And then, uh, um, one that, uh, the Trustlands team keeps close eye on is this Management of Com School Trustlands. So that's just a sample. Um, and encourage my colleagues to look at the, the rest of them, uh, in your handbook. And then the next slide. This is a sample of the legislative positions and proposals that either have been amended or excuse me amended, clarified, or they're brand new. If, uh, if it starts off with LP, which stands for Legislative Position, that means it's, uh, it's up to vote, um, for, uh, every year until it becomes a SLP, which is a standing legislative position. So, um, I believe this one was introduced, uh, last year, um, to, um, encourage the work of looking through all this through the Equity Lens. Um, and then you'll see a few more, um, Special Ed and Special Needs, um, Early Child Education. And then there's several new proposals, eight of them exactly, which are focused on, directly focused on the COVID-19 needs. And I encourage my colleagues to look at those, um, in greater detail. Um, here's, and the next slide, please. And just another listing of some of the ones that have been amended, clarified or new. And again, we'll all be voting on these. And, uh, a new, there's two new ones there that don't have a number. And that's first one there is PD for Basic Education via Distance Learning is the full name of it. And then the, um, which we know we hold dear and near right now. And then the other one is Government to Government and that deals with tribal relationships with our tribal partners, um, in which we all have, uh, very good relationships, um, here on the peninsula and, and then throughout the state naturally. And next slide, please. And I put this one in there because, um, this is, uh, the Board of Natural Resources and specifically the Department of Natural Resources, um, submit, um, some legislative proposals every year. And they come to WASDA and to the Trustland Advisory Team. And, uh, they ask for our thoughts and input. And, um, this is just, uh, a small sampling of, uh, their overall package that they're submitting. These ones though are specifically related to, that fall under either Common School, um, Trustlands, State Forest Trustlands, which then relates also to federal forest trustlands. And so you can see sprinkling of those, um, down there at the bottom, F, Rural Broadband. Um, and we know that that is, uh, all on the top of everybody's list. So it's, it's good to have other partners in this work, um, uh, for our schools. And I, I really value the work of, uh, from and the partnership with, um, DNR, um, because they're, uh, they're always coming to us and asking for our input because, uh, their fiduciary responsibility in the management of those lands is that, uh, um, that as beneficiaries, which is schools, um, receive, uh, uh, full benefit as much as possible. Um, so there's, there's some of the items. And if we can go to the next slide. And here, so now what and recommendations and then steps for boards to take before the assembly. So, um, as opposed to previous years where we, I typically would come to my colleagues with a list of recommendations. Uh, we have a little bit more time and we actually, uh, could do some of that, um, when we're at the assembly. Cause if everybody attends and, uh, we can, uh, vote on our priorities and, and submit that, um, to WASDA electronically at that time. Um, but looking for thoughts from my colleagues on, uh, what you would like to see. I could, I could do what I have done in the past is, uh, um, present some of our recommendations and, uh, Tracy did a, a, a survey for us and, and, uh, that, um, resulted in about 20, uh, priorities for us and, and that gave me as your ledge rep, um, um, an understanding of what our needs. I have a, I always would say is, uh, look, use the lens of the Equity Lens and then also our strategic plan, um, when, uh, we're, uh, reviewing these. And then, uh, there's, uh, WASDA has a Legislative Rep Series webinars. Um, the next one is on first September, but the last one, which was a couple of weeks ago, um, you can find it on the, um, Government Relations page or just by clicking on that link there. And then also Clallum County EDC, uh, they do, uh, a lot of outreach under what's called the North Olympic Legislative Alliance or NOLA. Um, there's been representatives from the school districts and the businesses and et cetera on that, uh, for the past, uh, four years. And, uh, they look at legislative priorities, um, through the lens of for our region. So we'll, um, and here is the North Olympic Peninsula, which also goes over it, um, into, uh, Jefferson County where our colleague, um, Director Ku is the Director of Team EDC. That's correct. Uh, but if you'd like to participate in their Zoom meeting, um, you send, uh, invite, invitation request to either of those and then you'll get an invite to a future board meeting or Zoom meeting, excuse me. Next slide, please. So this is the year round planner of, um, that legislative outreach. And, uh, we're down there in, uh, under July, September, review legislative positions with board and gather input to bring to the assembly. And then they attend the legislative assembly. Um, this has been renamed to General Assembly. And from there, last slide. Uh, gives several links and there's the, my, my partners, um, are down at the bottom. Uh, Rebecca Deal is my, uh, co-team member of, uh, Legislative Rep for Director Four. Bruce Willis out of Central Kitsap, he's the, the, uh, Resolution Rep for our area. And then Carolyn Perkins is at Bremerton. She's the WASDA Board, um, Rep for us. And, uh, I didn't, I apologize to Director Gibson. I did not list you under for our WIAA Rep. Um, I can add that as a correction to the slide. Otherwise, uh, that's all I have and, uh, can take any questions from my colleagues.
Okay. Thanks, Jim. Uh,
Thank you.
No worries about the, uh, leaving me off there. It's okay. Uh, looks like, uh, Director Ku's got his hand up.
Okay. Go ahead, Brian.
I'm mute with help. Uh, Anyway, uh, thank you and, uh, thanks for the presentation and the work you've been doing, um, with the Legislative Advocacy stuff. I know that takes a lot of time and energy, uh, to stay up on that. Um, regarding your question, I was thinking about this. So I'm just thinking out loud here. So please chime in with your thoughts as well of, you know, what, what should this board do in preparation for the General Assembly? Um, my knee jerk or I guess my bias would be towards a follow-up action as a board. Um, for some, you know, some sort of prioritization, uh, if that's been valuable in the past. You and I have talked about, how do we make that better? How do we make that, you know, it's, it's such a complicated machine. So I don't, I don't have a clear picture, but I do like the prioritization. Um, if that's something that is helpful, um, if, if you're going to be the voting delegate. Um, and I guess, I guess some of that's born out of concern, um, and admittedly concern of the unknown, um, in this current environment. Um, you know, we, we don't know how things are going to go, uh, at WASDA in general, even though the focus of the students, uh, I have no doubt that is, you know, going to continue to be at the, uh, the forefront. But things that may get contentious, uh, maybe, you know, the topic of, um, you know, uh, public or school resource officers as an example. Um, you know, recent example, of course, in Seattle, and shameful one, I believe, was the eliminating of those physicians, um, which I would be strong to advocate that we, uh, go in the opposite direction. And I see that WASDA, um, continues to advocate, I believe, to more of the same, uh, greater funding for, uh, personal security, but social emotional health, things like that. So I'm pleased with that, but I'm also concerned if, in case you are met with, um, a ground swell of opposition, um, frankly, because of the current political climate. So I guess I would look to you to see if, uh, that would be helpful as a board. I think that would be, um, good work on our behalf. Another example that has certainly become contentious and will, uh, find itself on the November ballot is the Comprehensive Sex Ed and the, uh, you know, abdicating local authority to the state. Um, you know, that may be something as well, uh, although I don't know if that's expressly, um, called out on, um, you know, standing positions or things like that. So I guess that's, that's me noting my bias as to why I think an exercise of some sort for this board to engage would be meaningful. Um, but in kind of this brave new world of, you know, COVID and, uh, how things were working and not, not fully understanding the full picture, I would, um, I'd seek your response on, uh, what you think would be best. Um, and then a second question, and I apologize, I missed it, uh, when you guys were flying through slides was where are the new proposals, like kind of the fresh off the griddle, uh, things in the handbook? You said page 18, is that right?
Now, if you look at page eight, nine and 10.
Got it. Okay.
That's a breakdown of, uh, ones that have been, that are new, amended and clarified. And to go back with your first part of the question, um, there is the amendment process. So you as a individual school board may submit an amendment and that window open, opens on Friday and goes through the next week. Um, and then, uh, um, I'm trying to go back to my timeline. Um, then on the 18th, we will all, all 1,477 school board directors will see the final amendment. the final amendment proposals that are out there. And since this exercise is virtual, there, there won't be what has occurred and we could say unfortunately at past legislative assemblies, there won't be the opportunity to make an amendment to an amendment to an amendment or wordsmith several of those proposals. That's is what board members now have the opportunity, starting on the 21st through the 28th, to review and put in their own thoughts. And then all that work will come back also to the Resolution Legislative Committee. And so now I would just encourage each of my board members to, to spend some time and, and you can see the work. Tracy, could you go back to if the one that says section two proposals and positions, so it's on the second slide? Yep. Okay, and keep, scroll down to, we're going to get to one of the first, we're going to get to the equity statement. Couple.
Sorry about that, I'm not on mute.
A little bit more Tracy. All right. So you can see some of the work that has transpired over since March, actually. And on the left is what the current position statement was for, and then the proposed changes that occurred and then a clean statement down there in that, which was adopted. And that's an example of ones, and if you find something in that one that you would like changed, then that's where you put an amendment in. And you mentioned the ref 90, so the comprehensive sex education falls under school and student safety. So there is not a, a specific legislative position on comprehensive sex education. It fell under the, as I said, the student safety and which is embedded in several of these here. And we could probably have a workshop on that whole one item. So I don't know if I answered that all the way for you, but, and then I would, I have no problem with doing what I have done in the past and put forth some recommendations. But I want to hear from the, the rest of the team here of what they would like to see the work from me. And thank you. And I see Eric's hand is up.
Yeah, thank you. I do have a couple more and I don't want to suck up all the air in the room, sorry Eric. Yeah, I do, I think an aspirational goal would be to have more involvement as a board. You know, as a local board with some of these processes and, you know, we, we obviously don't have time to do that in regard to amendments, you know, but in the future and certainly when bringing forward proposals. You know, that seems like perhaps something we may seek to do in better times. And I acknowledge, obviously, when proposals were going in, all of our hair was on fire. So I definitely, definitely get that. And I'm interested to hear from board colleagues about the prioritization piece. The other question I had to do was with the DNR example you gave. And thank you for clarifying, I was unclear as far as if that was something that WASDA was proposing or engaging with in some way. And I guess my, my concern was some of it seemed a little kind of out of the swim lane of a school board or a school board association or, or any of the alike versus, and I guess the question in that statement is, what is WASDA doing in regard to? I think the two elephants in the room, depending on who you ask, is a falling short of the fiduciary responsibility of the DNR to maintain harvest levels. And also the, you know, the clawback thing, which has been, you know, on and off and, and things of the like. And what I, I'm sorry, what I mean by clawback is the component where if Squim receives the DNR dollars that we are entitled to as a district, OSPI choosing to deduct those from our funds. And again, I'm looking at that through a lens of concern around funding and what we're going to be talking about, you know, in the next subsequent months, but we're really going to be talking about in January of next year. So do you have any comments or thoughts on where that, that dialogue is occurring and how this board specifically with our direct vested interests can engage on that?
So as you hopefully will recall, Director Ku, I was at the forefront of those conversations when we were able to overturn the WAC two years ago, which then allowed us and allowed 87 other school districts to keep those state trust funds money. It will be a hard fight this year because that, it expires for this biennium. And there are several legislators that want to know exactly how we are using those funds for. And we're going to have to articulate that pretty strongly or we will lose that. If you notice back on the budget, we received 300, roughly 308,000 this past year. And WASDA's Trust Land Advisory Team works very diligently. You're welcome to join us on the meeting on Thursday and hear some of that work. And the positions that are there in front of us, those are DNR's positions. And because of the partnerships and collaborations, but mainly partnerships that have been built over the last four years, they come and ask us our thoughts. And all of those, anything that's on state lands, because that state trust lands affects the revenue for schools and other junior tax and districts. So those are well within our, our swim lane as school board directors and especially WASDA and the Trust Land Advisory Team. So with that, Eric.
I'm sorry, Jim, I'm trying to be polite and mute myself. So I appreciate the little grace after you finish responding. Thank you for that, although again, I guess the question I, I would ask and I didn't hear an answer to is where is the discussion specifically occurring with our board around both addressing the historic, you know, rearage issues with the harvest with DNR? And the, and it sounds like you said the legislators are going to want to see something from the Squim School District in order to consider not clawing back our trust land dollars. I'm not clear on where that work is occurring and frankly, where we, the five of us, put our oar in the water and really push behind that, assuming we as a board agree that that's important, which we, I don't know if we've even had that discussion. Can you speak to that?
Yes, so that would be a question for, for an agenda item. But as it stands right now, from what I've been hearing via the conversations with the WASDA Trust Land Advisory Team, who speak to those legislators, Senate and House. And they want to reverse that clawback and they were not happy that OSPI took that away. They didn't think he, that OSPI had the authority was, was the basic message. And with all of the budget needs across all 295 school districts, that is one of those items that isn't tied directly to basic education model and that we will face getting that taken away. It's August, legislators aren't in session. And as I always have done, I keep the board apprised of any work that is coming down the pike. And if it needs to be an agenda item, then we can add it as an agenda item for a future board meeting.
Okay. So I'd just like to jump in real quick. If we could kind of move on, we've got a lot of agenda stuff too. This is an important topic, but as Jim stated, for us to be a further discussion, it's going to need to be an agenda item in the future. So I appreciate your thoughts there, Director Ku, and bring this back to the limelight here. But we would need to, to make this a bigger discussion, we're going to need to move it on to an agenda item in the future. Director Pickens, did you have something to add?
Okay, let's, let's do that, Mr. Chair. I will note that while session is not underway, as NOLA was mentioned, the work begins now. So I would, I would encourage us to give it some primacy if more work is to be done. So I appreciate that, thanks for the answers.
Okay. Director Pickens, did you have something?
Yeah, miss, thank, thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to just jump in briefly, just to talk about that I would certainly welcome, welcome an opportunity to weigh in. I think Director Stauffer, you said something about a, a survey, that sort of thing might be, might be in order. But certainly my, what comes to mind are the things that might really affect our area more than others. And I think about sort of, sort of the equity piece about different school districts and things to do with the school funding, of course, tax reform, tho- those types of issues are, are very much, very much concerned. And I, I would have an interest in addressing those as well as student safety, staff safety, those, any, anything regarding those issues as well, current, especially given our current circumstances. But overall, of course, that safety is a priority and, and equity in general too, when it comes to students and looking at things with an equity lens. So I've seen a few of these that directly relate to some equity piece and some implicit bias type focuses on and professional development, those types of issues. So just a little feedback on some of the areas that I'm passionate about that I wouldn't mind taking a look at possibly.
Thank you, Director Pickens. I will. Anything from Director Jeffries on this also?
Not, not anything other than I've been attending several of the caucus meetings and that's how I've been educating myself about some of these issues. So I encourage anybody, there's a few caucus meetings still scheduled to join in and we might have a director area for another caucus meeting to talk about these things before the General Assembly. So I encourage everybody to get involved.
Thank you. And with that, President Gibson, I turn it back over to you unless Superintendent has any questions or insight.
I will make, the only thing that I'm going to say is I'll make sure that that's an agenda item for an upcoming board meeting, that we have a board discussion and maybe, maybe that would even be incorporated into a work session.
Great, perfect, thank you. Okay, with that said, moving on, you are up there Superintendent Clark.
From our work session the other day, I, I briefly told you what my goals were for this upcoming year. And I kind of have articulated them in this document that to manage and lead the reopening process in Squim School District's response to the COVID-19 pandemic. I want to work with Tracy to get all the policies up to date. Work with Victoria and Lorraine Wilson to get all collective bargaining agreements current and up to date. Run a successful campaign for an EPNO, EPNO and capital projects levy after the first of the year. And then I would work with Jennifer and principals to create a common template for school improvement plans and monitor those closely. That's what my goals are for this upcoming year. At an upcoming work session, I would ask that the board members think and contemplate goals that they have for me in addition to these. And I will do my best to see that those are carried out. That is my report. I don't have much else to say. I spent the past weeks working on the reopening plan and working on our response.
All right, great, thank you. Next up, we have Board Business. First up, we have the approval of the 2021 Board Meeting Calendar.
I move for approval, Jeffries.
Second, Director Stauffer.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
Maybe this is appropriate here, I'm sorry if it's not. I think we got a note to the same, but just excited about what we've discussed before. I think it was in the workshop about capabilities for hybrid, you know, meet in person as a board, but also have streaming capabilities for folks to listen in. And I think our ongoing robust attendance is maybe a testament to how helpful that is for some families.
Yeah, absolutely, great point, yeah. And I, and I know that, yeah, we did, we did have discussion on that in our workshop as well on different, different thoughts and ways. And I know that it was stated that Bo was, you know, looking at technology and making sure that we had future technology to be able to allow for that in the future. So, you know, yeah, great point. And I know that that's a, it's a great help to, to our community and parents and, and all. As we can see, we've got, you know, 36 additional people in, in tonight's meeting. And we, you know, typically wouldn't have that in a regular board meeting. We have our, our regular four or five sitting out there that are probably out there somewhere. But anyway, any other comments? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor of the board calendar signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any, any opposed, same sign? All right, moving on, next up, approval of FP 600 Basic Education Minutes.
This is an annual approval that has not changed because of the COVID pandemic. We still have an obligation to provide the minutes that we do to the school district or to the children of the school district, excuse me.
Mr. Chair, in recognition of the familiar oddity that this document is, I would move to who is presented.
All right, thank you.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Same sign? All right, motion carries. Next up, we have item 11.03, approval of our Washington Schools reopening school plan.
Thank you, Director Gibson. I want to, this is my letter that will, you know, that accompanies this plan. It's been, you know, I'm explaining, explaining some of the metrics that our decision-making process is based on. And as you can see, we're, we're at that high level of more than 75 cases. So we, as I said, So we, as I said earlier, we will be starting remotely. Our district will strictly adhere to the above benchmarks. As we go through in my letter, OSPI guidelines encourage school district to prioritize face-to-face service for students that are most impacted. These are the students that they ask. Our plan is driven by these guidelines and brings to school the children described above. Plan demonstrates a commitment to our strategic plan that emphasizes providing flexible, innovating learning opportunities in a safe and respectful environment. From there, it's our full intention to bring other students into the fold with face-to-face instruction. That still hasn't changed. We, we fully intend to follow the guidelines by the Department of Health. It's just put it on the, it's put it into the future. So I, I long for the day that we are, we are having educating students in a face-to-face environment. The next slide I would ask Tracy is, is a slide that OSPI has asked us to fill in. It's called the Reopening Plan Template. It's, it's just a fillable document that where we answer questions that OSPI has asked of us. And before I go much farther, while I've been intimately involved in this, it would be remiss of me not to send kudos out to Jennifer Mon, who's been the workhorse for this document. Her and Trey, she's done a tremendous amount of work, as has Tracy Norman and the building principals, Donna, Becky, Sean, and Mark. Everyone's been involved, but I, I singled Jennifer out for a lot of this work. She's, she's worked extremely hard. The, many of these in the first part of the document are just yes and no answers as we move forward. The other thing, as we move forward and look at how we've addressed these, and of course, some of these have changed since we will be fully remote. I want to emphasize this is a living document, especially towards the end that the, the potential for changes to the schedules and some things exist. And Jennifer will talk about that a little bit as we move forward to the end. Just keep going through. If you have any questions, I hope you had a chance to look at this. We're going to go to the attachment towards the end. One of the big things, and you, you, you've heard is that I want to talk about a little bit. Jen's going to talk about it as we move forward. I think there's a major concern in our community and other communities that our remote virtual plan is better than last spring, and ours will be. And I know that we've had several teachers, administrators, and all of us have worked this summer to make the, a better program than we had last spring. It jumped up upon us, and I will tell you that quite frankly, that Squim School District is, is got to catch up technologically. And that's, that's a, that's going to be a tough road to hoe and a little bit of tough financial times, but we got to figure out how to get it done. And I, I, I don't need to tell many of you that are listening that we, we should, we, we should be higher on the technological curve than we are. But, and we'll get there, maybe not as quick as some of us would like. I know one of the, one of the situations that has created a little bit of consternation for some of our teachers is we've moved to a single learning management system, and that is Canvas. The high school and some of the middle school had been using Canvas, but we're going to be using this at the K-12 level. And we hope that that will be more accommodating for our parents and our students as we move through. I ask that you go to the, and I'm going to give the floor over a little bit to Jennifer at this time. And she's going to talk about these schedules and go from there. So go to the elementary weekly schedule, please.
Thank you, Dr. Clark. So, school board directors and Dr. Clark, up, up on the screen right now, you can see the elementary remote learning schedule. Donna and Becky did a really great job of putting this together. So we will be posting assignments on particular days. They've got them by subjects across the top. They have a specific time for district email and canvassing, and then they lay out the rest of the day. I don't want to belabor, you know, going into that, but if you have questions about that, you can ask me. And then there is a secondary remote plan as well. It's a little bit in a, in a draft form. We're trying to align the elementary and the secondary a little bit better. We've heard very loud and clear from parents that if they have students in multiple grade levels with, with maybe only one device, that we need to align when students are learning throughout the day. So the elementary document is done and it's final. And we just have a little bit of tweaking to do on the, on the secondary document. We're still going to stick to the schedule, not in AABB, but Wednesdays will still be the day for professional development, for collaboration and those individual team meetings. So they will be able to collaborate cross-grade level, cross-subject areas, or vertically K-12 as needed. And all of our professional development, instead of being done on a Monday, will be done on Wednesday. And the reason that we're doing that is that will follow us as we go into the AABB schedule. So as students come back in the building, it doesn't disrupt that Wednesday period of remote learning and professional development that we've aligned across, across the schools. As Dr. Clark said earlier, we have adopted Canvas K-12 as our one and only learning management system. I, I really have to give kudos to the elementary principals and their staff. It was a hard decision for everybody to kind of, to align K-12. They rolled up their sleeves. They're going to PD this week. We've got a couple of teachers at both Howler and Gray Wolf that have really just helped design the template for Canvas for the elementary school. And of course, Isaac Rappel J and his team have been invaluable in helping the elementary get, get up and running for Canvas or with Canvas. We'll have more professional development next week for Canvas and throughout the year. But I'm just really grateful to a wonderful group of people to get Canvas up and running. And then our other, our synchronous and asynchronous learning will come through two different, two different things. Canvas Studio has the ability to speak with families and students, and then Microsoft Teams will be our other platform.
Jen, just real quick, could you, could you give the board and the audience a quick definition of synchronous and asynchronous, please?
Yeah, you wouldn't make me do that. No. Yeah, so synchronous learning is learning that's going on in the moment. That's live. A teacher and a kid and the class are learning and they're having conversations with each other, and they're all together and they're live. That can become asynchronous if you record it and post it later. So the student can learn and watch a video later on. So two different, two different forms of learning. That is something that I just thought of today. So I have a, I have a learning document that I'm going to post on the website that kind of talks about what the two different pieces are and what our systems are that align with the synchronous and asynchronous. So that should probably go up sometime tomorrow. One of the things that we have in the works that is not quite ready to go, it should be ready this week, are two really big documents. They're 20 pages each, one for elementary and one for secondary. And it answers a lot of the questions that people have. It'll answer, you know, talking about Canvas, how you, how you log in, what are the different parts of Microsoft Office that, that teachers and parents need to be able to use? What are the schedules for elementary and secondary? All the technology tools have been updated. So there's, there's two real big documents that are not here on this, on the board presentation tonight, but they'll be ready to go probably sometime this week. I've just been waiting to have some more time with the principals as, as they've just come back. Again, I want to, I want to have everybody keep checking the remote learning tab on the website. There is and will continue to be a lot of information there. So if you're a parent at home and you forgot how to get onto Canvas, you can go right to the remote learning tab that Tracy's bringing up for me. This is a whole new section on our website. So I'll have to refresh it, Trace. There it is. So there's our remote learning there. And so those bigger documents will be loaded later this week. Talks about the Core Four. The Core Four is in remote learning. You always want to have four ways in which students connect with their teachers. And so up here, we've got the Canvas, Canvas Studio, and the Microsoft Teams, and it breaks it down. We're going to link it later this week in terms of giving people that information. But if you go to resources and tutorials, even now, I've got a lot of teachers that, that don't want to wait for PD next week. They're, they want to get started. So we have a little bit of information on the website. So if you go to Canvas, Tracy, if you want to get started, you want to figure out how it works. There's videos, there's on-demand webinars, there's resources, there's information on parents, how they log in. So a lot of information is starting to come up and get on the website. And I have to thank, we have a very limited team right now. So I have to thank everybody that's been helping us get this information up and on the website. Some people don't, haven't had a lot of interaction with Teams, even though we've been using it for school board meetings. They're more familiar with Zoom. So we've got video trainings and quick start guides up on the, on the website. However, all the, the staff will have more training on the Microsoft Teams and the Canvas during our five and a half days of professional development next week. So a lot of things will be aligned that weren't necessarily aligned in the fall. Like, like Dr. Clark said, I think the pandemic snuck up on all of us and we just wanted to, to do our best in the face of what was happening. So a lot of information will be aligned. It will come out later this week. And I don't know if the board had any specific questions, but this is, this is the Remote Learning 2.0 that we're putting, this is a living draft for the secondary. And once again, same thing, just like the elementary. The assignments will be posted by 8:00 AM every day. You'll have math on Monday, ELA, English Language Arts on Tuesday, electus PE Wednesday, science Saturday, or Saturday, science on Thursday, and history on Friday. We might want to do a little bit more tweaking and align them a little bit with the elementaries. But again, these are the expectations. You can see when teachers will be meeting. You can see where, when content will be recorded and when they'll be loading things into Canvas. So as you can imagine, trying to align K-12 takes a little bit of time, takes a lot of, a lot of, a lot of input from staff. And as you know, staff are not required to be back until next week, until next Tuesday. So there has been a lot of teachers that have given input to the principals. The principals have take, been taking that input and tweaking it. So that's one of the reasons why the secondary draft is, or the secondary schedule is in a draft form. But they're going to take a look at that later this week and see if we want to add anything to that and clean that up. So once those two schedules are done, then the larger documents will go up on the website. It'll provide a lot of information and a lot of, if you have specific questions, who to contact and who to call. If you have a question, if your student's an ELL, English Language Learner, who do you need to contact? If your student's a highly capable student, who's your best contact? So a lot of that information will be up. And I'm hoping that will solve a lot of problems and anxiety and questions that a lot of, a lot of folks have. And as, as always, we get questions a lot. Anyone can feel free to email. And you do, if you have got questions or concerns. Now that we're remote, it doesn't really change our teaching and learning and tech plan. It only makes it more, puts us even more of a fire under us. I will say that we are still getting technology out to students. We're doing that every Wednesday in those desktops that we've got refurbished. And then the and, but the one thing I am concerned about is the students that don't have internet access. As I get that information, I am compiling that. The cabinet, Rob and I have been speaking about what we're going to do for those students. Right now, I only know of about 15 families that are in that situation. But as I know more, that will help us provide that information to help them. And Director Stauffer, did you have a question for me?
Yes, if you're, if we're at a point you're taking questions, I
Yeah, I just, there's a lot of information in here, so I don't know specifically what you've looked at and, and what you have questions about. So I'm happy to help try and answer any questions, especially why we've got lots of people on the call.
Okay, so I, I guess I'm the first up. So there was a lot of discussions in the spring with grades. And you know, a lot of the traction then came out of OSPI on how grades will be. How do you, so first question is, how do you see grades being assigned through this next year? And then a couple of others is the feedback from staff on this platform. And then I was getting input that some staff thought Google Classroom was a better platform. But I know that we, you know, a lot of the work was by you and your crew and, and waiting until, to get the rest of the buy-in was from when we got principals back and, and other staff back. So I appreciate what has been going on, the work. It's tremendous over this summer vacation. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let me, let me answer your questions. So OSPI has not changed any grading recommendations. So right now, it would be, what we would normally do is normal grading, A, B, C, D, F. There hasn't been any more guidance on that right now. I suspect the reason for that is that they're very busy. We got really clear guidance on attendance last week. Attendance is in that larger document for remote learning. And we will provide staff with some training on what attendance will look like in a remote learning environment. So we have that. But nothing from OSPI yet. So as of right now, we will stay in our traditional A through F guides, guidelines for grades. In terms of Canvas versus Google Classroom, one of the issues that we were always going to run up against is we are a Microsoft Office school district. So everything that we do runs on Microsoft Office 365. And so if you, if we were to adopt a Google Classroom, we would have a completely different set of logins for students and staff in order to get into the Google environment. Then we would be running two environments at the same time. Google Classroom's for 2,000 people, or 2,800 students and staff, and Microsoft Office 365, 2,800 students and staff. With, right now, we've got three tech people. So even just from a standpoint of capacity, we had to make a decision that made sense to streamline everything. We did take input from a lot of people. And what's very similar to Google Classroom is Microsoft Class Notebook and Microsoft Teams. And so they have the same exact capability in Microsoft Office 365. It's just called something. It's just a Microsoft platform. And a lot of the, if staff had items in Google Classroom, a lot of that can be uploaded and can be linked to Canvas. So Canvas was a really great way for us to align everybody and everyone rather quickly in a, in a K-12 environment. So that is where Canvas ended up coming from. But as you know, it was already at the high school. So if we had chose Google Classroom, I would have had to pull everybody off of Canvas 612. So it was a really difficult decision, but we went through lots of questions and answers. We took input from staff and principals, and ultimately we landed on Canvas. So hopefully that helps. that helps you understand why we landed on Canvas. Director Jeffries?
Yeah, I want to thank you for all your hard work. I know it hasn't been easy, and I know it's kind of like 20,000 things to do right now to get, get ready for the start of school. You know, I've been worried about the start of school. I think there's a good chance we're going to be remote most, most of the school year. I don't know that, so we need to have a good, robust, well-organized, remote system going for our students and for our teachers. I have a background in educational technology, but it's, I'll admit, it's been a few years. So I've been trying to get up to speed as quickly as I can. I found those webinars and those videos that you mentioned. I don't watch them all, but I watch enough of them to get a good feel for what the various platforms are and how they work. I would encourage parents and board members to do the same. I realize the teachers and administrators will be getting more deeply into them. Actually, I really encourage administrators to know those platforms very, very, very well, so they can support their teachers. If the administrators aren't up to speed, and parents aren't up to speed, and board members aren't up to speed, it's going to make it difficult for teachers and kids. So I encourage that. And there's probably a lot of other things I could say, but those are the main, watch the videos, watch the webinars, and try to make sense of it all. And thank you for all your really hard work, you and your, your team of people. I know it hasn't been easy.
Thank you, Director Jeffries. I appreciate it. Director Kuhn, Director Pickens, I don't know who put their hand up next. So does one of you just want to go ahead and start?
I will defer to the professional. Thank you.
Okay, Director Pickens?
Thank you. I was, I was happy to let you go first. But just want to, want to thank you, and especially around the, the whole central focus with the Core Four. And I received some professional development that I'm, I'm at myself. And I, I think the, even though this is a platform, even as a teacher, I'm not as familiar with, although I'll, I'll learn with my, along with my second grader. But I think the idea is to keep things as consistent as possible, so that the parents can give the necessary support. And, and it's, we're not using 20 different, 20 different systems all across the district. And that, quick question I had, actually, Canvas Studio is, is that, is that essentially the same as Screencastify, one of those type programs?
I believe so. You know, one thing that, I'm not a technology person by trade. I'm a teaching and learning person. But I have learned a ton. And if there is Screencastify, there is five different abilities to do it within, just in different programs. So one of the other things that I'm working on is laying out a sheet that says, if you use this, you can also use, you use this, you can also use this. It's going to be called the Squim School District Application Guide for all the applications that we use. And I do have to say, there's been a lot of great input. And Beau and the librarians and I are working on a one-system login. So you can log into a system called Clever, and it will log you into every single application that this district has. It's fabulous. I believe it will be ready to go by the time the teachers come back. We have some tweaking to do, so I didn't really want to announce it, even though I just did. But aligning every application that we have and all of our systems into a single-user login is an amazing feat. So I just have to say to my tech team, Beau and Scott, and, and Elizabeth and the librarians who are working on getting those ready to go and together, just thank you there. You'll see a lot of stuff coming in the next few days and the next few weeks. So that is, you'll see that come out sometime next week. So I don't know if you're familiar with that from...
I am, I am. It's really slick. It's going to be great. Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's, and we've had it. We've had it, and I didn't know that we've had it. So they're working on that as fast as we can. And, and like Dr. Clark said before, we're trying to get up techn, technology-wise, we're trying to get, to get moving. And to no fault of anybody's, we just have two people right now. And, and so me and two tech people are trying to do everything we can with the technology. So we're stretched a little bit thin, but we're going to be ready. So clever coming.
Awesome. My, my other question, I guess revolves around some of the, the schedules. And I think I heard you say that these are, these are just kind of rolling out as, as drafts. And I know we're trying to put something together that's going to obviously reflect best practices in a virtual environment, and also the, the flexibility, whether you have siblings and, and parents giving support. So I appreciate you mentioning that. Is, is one of the other reasons why that these are just kind of rolling out as drafts is so we can get a lot more additional teacher input before it's finalized?
Correct. We're, we're trying to build a lot of stuff, and we want teacher input, but yet they're not required to come back. You know, they're not under contract. So we, we're in this middle ground. So principals came back last week. They're in the building. Some of the teachers are in, they're giving input. But we do want the majority of teachers who are coming in next week to be able to give a little bit of input to these, not to the overall document, but to these, to these calendar, or to the schedules. So, yeah.
Okay.
And so that, you'll see that get cleaned up just a little bit.
Okay. And then the only other piece that I would just wonder about, and I'm sure it's kind of in the plan, but just what I referenced earlier in, in, in the, the board meeting, just about the prioritizing the social-emotional learning and within, within those. And I, I did see it referenced a little bit, but even, you know, I've even heard this thrown out in a virtual world, even though it sounds funny, at a elementary level that you have recess scheduled. And of course, recess looks different. But, but things like that, that are, you know, especially if we're looking at a longer period of time, how are we going to implement these things, even if they look different? Are we going to have that, those kinds of things scheduled in as well?
Correct. And I, and I'm going to meet with the principals later this week, and we'll talk about that. We are going to talk about the social-emotional piece. I think that's really important. And I think it's really important then when we do start remote learning, that we go slow to go fast. And that means finding out where the families are, and where the students are, and where their social-emotional learning is. We start there, and then we can slowly bring in, bring in the reading, writing, and math a little bit later. I don't want to day one, we hit them with a bunch of, a bunch of curriculum. So we will talk about the rollout of that when, when I meet with the principals later this week or next week. Appreciate that feedback.
Yeah, good. Thank you. And I do have a few other questions, but I think it might relate to more of what, what Dr. Clark is going to be, be covering. So I'll, I'll, I'll defer it to my, I think Director Kuhn was wanting to ask some questions.
Okay. Thank you, Director Pickens.
All right, I'll take a stab at pedagogy, even though that's way out of our swim lane. I appreciate the clarification on the synchronous versus asynchronous learning. Is that, is that going to be a standard practice for just about any class? Because I, Dr. Clark used it in a different setting, but thinking of the silver lining of this, you know, online tragedy we're all forced with, seems like one of them could be flexibility, temporal flexibility and learning for, you know, our, our families. And I don't know what they're going to be facing in terms of childcare and, and scheduling this and that. So I guess, once again, just full disclosure, that question is born out of unknown concern or concern of the unknown.
Absolutely. And that, and I don't want to say too much, but it does, I mean, we have all had high schoolers, or most of us have had high schoolers in our lives, and they are not up and fun at 8:00 AM. So they can do their learning a little bit later, and they can with the asynchronous learning. They can have more time, and everybody can have more time as needed and be a little bit more flexible. But I also think it's important to follow a schedule that if parents or families need a schedule to follow, and teachers are in the buildings, that we follow that. But there is absolutely going to be flexibility for different needs with different families. And, and it's just a matter of working it out, figuring out who needs, who needs what. So that's definitely something that you're going to see even on a snow day. Dr. Kuhn, like, let's say we have a snow day, we will be up and running to the point where we can, we don't have to count snow days anymore. So there, there's a lot of bummer in not seeing students face-to-face. And I do hope that we get them back as soon as we possibly can. But we're at that point now with, with remote learning, we could never have a snow day again. So that's something to think about.
Yeah. Thank you. That's great. You, I was on mute, so you missed my snort laugh when you were talking about the high schoolers. But it made me think of my own Yetis here in the Kuhn household. Thank you. I, I guess the other thing I would say, too, is clearly y'all are on top of it. And, you know, that's reassuring to me as a parent and a board member. And I really appreciate that. I cringed earlier when you were answering the question about the Google Classroom's versus Canvas, and that frustrating duality of having, you know, Microsoft operating systems and interacting with the world of Google. I do, I do it on a daily basis. And if that's a bullet that can be avoided, that's, that's a beautiful thing for our teachers. So thank you for you and your team's thoughtfulness on bringing this forward and this recommendation to the board for approval.
Great, thank you. Director Jeffries, did you have another question for me?
Not, not particularly a question. I just wanted to give kudos out to the, the educators that, that this summer, on their own, maybe with the help of the school system, sought out and pursued their own professional development, took classes, took courses, whatever they could to get themselves prepared. I know we have a fantastic bunch of educators out there, and some of them have gone out of their way to bring themselves up to speed. And I think we ought to take real advantage of what they've learned and the expertise they've gained from those classes that they're, they've taken and the insights they've gained. So I just wanted to pat them on the back and encourage them to keep it up.
Thank you, Director Jeffries. And, and I'll turn it back over here to, to Dr. Clark. But I do, again, I would just want to reiterate to, to the principals and teachers that have been in with me all summer. I, I cannot do this work without all of you. And to my team, I need to express to you that I've been, there's maybe four or five of us that are doing a majority of this work and trying to get it ready with really limited resources and limited people. So I just, the technology department, Beau and Scott, and, and Maria Sebel, Maria Rorgen, Megan, Renee, Hannah, Tracy, I know I'm going to forget people. But it's not a big team, to be honest, to do this kind of work. And this work has needed to be done for a while. So the silver lining, I think, is that we're streamlining things. And my goal is to make it as easy as humanly possible for teachers when we come back in in the fall. And, and I appreciate, they email me, they let me know what their concerns are, they let me know what their needs are, and we can monitor and adjust. And we'll continue to do that for the foreseeable future while we get this up and going off the ground. So thank you very much. And I'm available for questions at any time. And Dr. Clark, it's back to you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you very much, all the work. Kudos, kudos. I just would, we, we left you out there. Chair Gibson, did you have any questions?
Actually, I just had one, and kind of going back to something. And I don't know, there was a lot of discussion there, if I, if I heard kind of resolve on that. I know that we did state that we, that we knew of, say, 15 families that had technology issues. And, and what is, what is our resolve for that at this point? And, and even if we find out more. And you may have said that, and I missed it.
I didn't. And sorry, I didn't call on you because your hand wasn't raised, so I'm sorry.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, one of the, one of, Dr. Clark and I had a conversation with some, it was the PUD, I believe. And one of the, there's two issues with technology in terms of internet. There's families that can't afford it, and that's, that's a different issue. What I'm finding is that the families that don't have internet capabilities is because of where they live. So they're so remote that even if I gave them a hotspot, they can't pick up a signal. And so that's the bigger concern. And, and I, right now, we're going to continue to work with the PUD. The city of Squim and I, Charlie Bush, have been in conversations about what, what do we need to do? They're going to kind of pick up that torch for us and help us with that. It's not an easily solvable answer right now. I can give hotspots to families that have access close to them, or they can pick it up off of a phone. But if you live in Diamond Point or Blue Mountain, I can't even get you service. It's just not there. So we're going to have to get a little bit more creative. Beau and I are going to, are going to work on that. And as, and as Dr. Clark said, there may be a few families that need to, to come in. And so as we get closer to the start of the school year, and we know exactly who the families are, we'll make a few more decisions. But we're not quite there yet.
Okay, thank you. And I completely, I completely understand that situation. I have a staff member that is out in Beaver, just out of Forks. And we tried all of those methods, hotspots, couple of different options of that. And he has to drive into Port Angeles to use the office to be able to do any kind of electronic, any communication like that. So that is a concern when we're out in an area like us, and we have people out, that live out, out away from technology connections. So thanks, thanks for that, that explanation. I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Okay, Dr. Clark, I'll turn it back to you. Thanks for that, that opportunity.
You know, I, I, I do want to just piggyback on some things that Jennifer talked about and that, that is going to transpire over the next few weeks. And that is, we have to figure out what we, you know, what music programs are going to look like, what phys ed programs are going to look like, what those hands-on courses that are not as applicable to Canvas as ELA or math or some of those things. And they're, and, and those programs are every bit as crucial to the total education of children. And we, we have to figure those, those things out. And we have a great staff, and I'm sure we're going to come up with some outstanding ideas. And I think Jennifer alluded to this, as did Director Jeffries. I think we, we have to use all these things as a teachable moment in the sense that educate, we have to change, and we have to adapt to the situation that we're in. And hopefully, we can use these situations to provide ultimately a better education than we have been providing. And it won't look the same, but I, I know two to three years from now, when the COVID pandemic is over, and I know at some time it will end. I'm a little bit more optimistic than Director Jeffries, but I can't really disagree with him when he says it's going to go for most of the year. We, we will be using a lot of the technology and Canvas and those things in the years to come. And I think ultimately, it is a bonus for our students and our staff and our community. But I did want to highlight one thing Jennifer said kind of in passing. We are looking at, we were looking at the opportunity of having some of those students come into, like, the caf, that did not have Wi-Fi, coming into a cafeteria, a library, someplace where they could log on for a few hours and do some of their work. Last spring, we had them out in parking lots, whether it be JCPenney or the middle school or those things were. But I'm a little hesitant to do that now with the uptick. So we're going to be looking at, at options for those kids, because they are high on our radar list. I will say this, at this point in time, we are expecting, you know, the staff to come into school. There are, there are individuals that have made arrangements with our HR department because they have, you know, vulnerable health issues, either themselves or, you know, a, a person in their household. We're looking at, at every case. And Victoria's doing a great job with that. She's sent out a, a lot of emails, and she's working with our staff. But we are, you know, looking at people coming back in the buildings. So that's where we're at. I would ask the board to approve this plan.
Mr. Chair, in recognition of the superintendent's recommendation, I would move to approve the plan as presented.
Thanks for the motion. Do I have a second?
I second it, Director Stauffer.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Do we have further discussion? I think Director Pickens, you had a couple of follow-up questions. So I'll turn it over to you. I saw you raise your hand.
Thank you. And...
Thank you. And my first que, well, although, well, it kind of does relate to this in a way is, this is a question that I was holding off from about your first announcement that you made at the beginning of this meeting, Dr. Clark, about the going fully remote and until we have four weeks under that 75 threshold. Just, just for further clarification, so does that mean essentially that four weeks? That's not four weeks once school starts, that's four weeks whenever we, we get under that 75 mark? Am I understanding that correctly? So that could happen even, we could make, optimistically, maybe that happened a week or a week and a half from now, even before school started. It really, well, when I say four weeks, I, I, I mean 28 days because they count when, when they're counting days. They, you know, count a full week. It's not a work week. It's 28 days. So I'll just take a, I'll pull a date out. September 10th, we go under 75. And from September 10th to, I'm going to say October 8th, if that's 28 days. And every one of those days is under 75. Then we would start school on prob, and I'm going to say the Monday following October 8th. If October 8th, this is Thursday, I don't think we're going to start school on a Friday. But that, the specifics of the exact day, you know, after the 28th day, we did not talk about that as the super, as superintendents. We're going to get a little bit finer on that as, as in the next few days. That's kind of what I was thinking about. And I think, I don't want to speak for the other three, but I think that's what they were thinking about. Does that answer your question? Yes, it does. Thank you. The relating to, I'm, I'm thinking about, and maybe you could speak a little bit to this, I'm thinking about starting, the starting remote and the use of, I, I, I still have a lot of concerns over, over our transportation funding and where we're at with that, particularly where these, you know, drivers with the appropriate license of CDL and, and being hard to fill positions are the, is there, with starting online, do you still anticipate that we're going to be able to, to, to have responsibilities that those, those staff members are able to, to assist with? I've met with Victoria and Darlene and we've hashed out a little bit of a plan and it's going to involve meeting with the transportation workers. And I, I, at this point in time, I'd like to leave it at that. Okay. And I will tell you, it's our desire to, in the best of all worlds, we lay off no one. In the best of all worlds, but I, and, and that's our goal. Will that happen? I, I, I can't answer that question. I do think that there could be employees, whether they be transportation employees, secretaries, para-ads who might be asked to do some things outside of their normal, to, to keep their employment, maybe some, and, and I don't really want to say, and we, we're meeting with various representatives from our bargaining units. And, and I kind of want to say, that's our goal. I don't know that it will happen, but a lot of that will depend on how, how those meetings come out. Okay. All right. Thank you. Question about technology. And I saw on the, the checklist plan that we had marked 71 to 80, 80% there on the technology. And I, you know, truth, truth be told, in a, in a perfect world, I'm, I'm, I'm a believer in, in having true one-to-one. And I, but I know things like that require probably a, a separate technology levy, something of that sort. But do we have the, the ability to, at least for those folks? I know, I know that we sent desktops, but is it, is it, are, are we going to make any more investments to really step that up? If we're starting in a remote environment to include things that, where, where they can connect visually as well, have cameras and everything set up? Go ahead, Jim.
Do you want me to take that?
Please.
Yeah. Yes, you, we are, Director Pickens. As, as teachers are learning more and more about the technology and the different things that we can get there, there's been a lot of talk about, even in a sense, document cameras are becoming obsolete. So there's new technology now where you have like, it looks like a mouse pad, but you write on it and everything goes up virtually into that. So we've started looking into some of that technology. There's also another technology where a teacher can be in a room and as they move, a camera will follow them and, and, and record them if they want to. They, they cost a thousand dollars apiece. So we have some teachers that might be, be willing to pilot that. But we are looking into that and that will be something that Beau and I will look farther down the road once we get everybody up and going and kind of get the feedback from teachers about what they need. We'll start having those conversations. Whether or not we can do a lot without a technology levy, that, that's something that I can't answer at, at this time.
And I think I was thinking more of, and I definitely appreciate that. And I think we need to be, we're, 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 like Dr. Clark already alluded, from a technology perspective, we're, we're a little behind the eight ball. But thinking more about the students and if we're really going to have true engagement. I know that they talk about synchronous being a better environment for social, social emotional, you know, that connection. And, and then asynchronous is a lot more about developing new con, developing new learning. But I'm thinking of the, the synchronous part where if you truly want a student engaged, you kind of have to have that piece where a student has a camera and, and then of course they're connecting through a, through a live synchronous event. So I think that's kind of more of what I was speaking, can we get as many students connected in that way as, as possible?
And sorry, I didn't, I didn't catch the student part, but yes, Beau and I are working on that. We, we are at the point where if we have just a little bit, a few more laptops, we could start to think about going one-to-one, but that would take, that's a big conversion. And one of the things, as you can imagine right now, is even getting laptops for students and/or staff is really difficult because they're all backordered and everything. And, and so even the, the, the small amount of technology that I've gotten to check out for students is still not here yet. And so we're still waiting on that, on, on that to show up. So those are some things that Beau and I will come back to the board once we get up and started and give you an update on, on where we're at and what the students' needs are. And again, for any family that needs items like that, we just, we need to know and we can try and solve the problem as they get to us.
Okay. Well, and let me know, I have my, my school board issued laptop. If you need it for the cause, let me know and I'll, I could switch to another laptop. So happy to give it back if, if it can get, help out a student or, or a staff member. So.
I will remember that. Thank you.
Okay. I guess the only other question, sorry, I've got a lot of questions here. But the factors about, well, and I guess this is a request, kind of where we're on this full remote. Do you anticipate that prior to making a decision to, to go back to a, a hybrid? That, that will be, that will, that we would have a, have a board meeting to discuss that first, Dr. Clark? We will, I see us being a constant discussion, whether it's a specific board meeting, the, that day. I, I'm not sure of that, but we'll be able to, you know, when we're talking about 28 days in a row, that's, that, that's a long period of time. And we'll, we'll, we'll have a level of anticipation that it's going to be there. So yes, there will be a, a board conversation about it. Will there be a board meeting on the 27th day? I'm not sure. Yeah. No, I think you answered my, my, my question there and I wasn't, wasn't anticipating on the 27th day. So the only other, the only other piece that I would just put in is I would just strongly hope that we are being as, as flexible as we can be with, with staff members that are, that are in very unique situations. And I know there's some that are very concerned about their health or a family member's health about returning to, returning to buildings. So I would, I would hope that we're going to be as flexible as possible and, and address those issues as they come up. So that's all for me. Director Stoffer had some, a question.
Yes, thank you. So we have a community forum on Wednesday night. So it gives us a, a great opportunity to answer a lot of the questions that I see are popping up there in the chat room and, and we're probably all receiving similar ones. And so from there, I just, again, appreciate the work that has been involved and that will probably morph and then some. And this is a community and a region-wide situation in that. And so there's some responsibility out there of, of our other, of other folks in the community. And I appreciate a doctor unthinks quotes or messages in the paper today. So again, just, I very appreciative of all the, all the work. And that's, and appreciate the questions from my colleagues. Thank you.
Okay. Do we have anything else?
Mr. Chair, could I, one more question?
Go ahead.
Sorry, this one slipped by, but I did notice in the documentation that we were still approving, it did still have the phase in that also involved, and I mentioned this, I believe, in the workshop, that also still had sixth grade and ninth grade in a phase in. I think we talked about that not being aligned with, with the Department of Health recommendations. So. We will. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Okay. Anything else? All right. Jim, did you have something else?
No, I was just trying to make sure it was not raised because it looked like, so I'm sorry.
Okay. Hearing no more questions. Do we have, we have a motion and a second? Do we have all those in favor of the approval of the reopening plan? Signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Same sign. All right. Thank you. Moving on. Next up, we have approval of resolution number 07, 2019, 2020.
Chair, this is Director Stoffer and I motion to approve as presented.
All right. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Director Jeffrey, a second.
Okay. Thank you. Any discussion?
Did I hear, what was Dr. Clark about to say? I was just going to say this resolution is directly applicable to the plan you just approved.
Got it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Same sign. Okay. Motion carries. All right. With that said, this ends all our agenda items for our regular school board, our regular board meeting. We will be going into an executive session here afterwards. So we will be leaving this meeting and we have another link to jump back into that or coming back into this link.
We have another link, don't we, Tracy?
We do not. You're going to start a join now meeting in the school board teams and then invite people to come.
Got it. Okay. Who's going to do that? Myself or Dr. Clark?
I'm going to have Dr. Clark work through that.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you go.
Jim, Director Stoffer, you have a question before we leave?
Yes. Can we have like a five minutes to, does it be other office?
That's not a problem.
It'll probably take Dr. Clark five minutes to figure it out. All right. Okay. Meeting adjourned and we'll be, we'll meet.
To be clear, that's a compliment. Thank you.
And we will be, meet back in executive session in five minutes to discuss the personnel issue. Thank you. Meeting adjourned.